Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, Almighty, everlasting God, I stand before you with a humble heart. I ask you, Father, to continue to lay your healing hands on your anointing, anger anointing blood over our mayor and our city officials. Father, you are our beginning, our yes of our yesterday. You are our mystery of today. You are our hope for tomorrow. And with knowledge and humility, our dependence on thee, I ask you, Father, to rain down your love on those who walk in your faith every day, on those who need your mercies, and on those of us who need your blessings. Father, I also ask you to rain down your love on our city and all the cities across America. Let us gather here tonight to uplift, gather, and to give information, to give service in your name to better the city of Brunswick. Let your light shine, Father, to lead us in your path of righteousness. And these things I ask, amen.
Amen. Would you leave this?
To the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to introduce the blue talk.
I have one question. I'll make the voting to the floor. We had another discussion, a little discussion, economic development, commission for that.
Sir.
The motion, probably second to add to our agenda for the discussion, economic development. Any questions? Um, five comments. Question, comment? All in favor, please raise your hand. If you care, if you have. Have anybody else a comment? You have one person that has not given a comment? A lady or?
No.
Can I have a cook? This is about June 2.
Thank you for having me to speak tonight. Ladies and everyone, my name is Tatiana Cook. And I'm originally from, in San Antonio, raised around Virginia. In Virginia, I was actively involved in community organizations and programs. I have helped to organize and coordinate several sports programs in different. My educational background includes being serving adolescent system, serving by receptionists. I have a degree in political counseling. And I'm a vice school service head. In addition to that, I currently pursue my bachelor's degree in criminal justice and business management. Furthermore, I am a member of several nonprofit organizations, sole owner, owner, and fellow of Juneteenth G. And an expert in Juneteenth. It was in the midst of raising money for uniforms, equipment, transportation, monitors, coaches, and practice space that I met the executive director of Juneteenth Virginia, Cheryl Bailey. She took me under her wings, became my mentor, and supported my efforts in advocating for the youth and helping to build communities in which we serve. I later became the administrative assistant and secretary for Juneteenth G. And was very excited about learning so much about our culture. Fast forward, came to Brunswick in 2010 and you never heard about the city before. I was fleeing domestic office situation and was led to this small town. It was while I was getting state lost here in Southern Maine that I realized there was no Juneteenth celebrations. Once you get used to doing something, especially something that you're very passionate about, it comes like second nature. And when you're not doing it anymore, you just feel lost and empty. So you could probably imagine that I was feeling tired after having worked with some awesome people in Virginia who have dedicated their lives to build communities across the world. Another notable person I worked closely with in Virginia was Ambassador Chris Mark Meyer and his wife. Ambassador Meyer was born and raised in Jeffy Rosenholz in Portland, Virginia, and had come back and was actively involved in the community in which he grew up. I was inspired by that, that he did not forget and was not shutting it to his roots. Juneteenth is short for June 19. It was June 19, 1865, that General Boarding Ranger arrived in Yalvestin, Texas to read General Order Number 3 and execute this order in accordance with the proclamation from then-President Abraham Lincoln, that all slaves are now free. You can just imagine how now former slaves felt at that moment. It was a moment of celebration and excitement. They were finally free. This announcement came two and a half years after the emancipation proclamation on January 1st, 1863. So let me further explain why it's so important to everyone to be aware and celebrate its legacy. Juneteenth is a celebration of freedom. It serves as a platform for people, all people, to talk about the justices and injustices of our ancestors. It is recognized and celebrated annually on June 19.
This is what here for you to enjoy, to shake hands with. You had houses to worship like Shiloh and Zion and raised, and he was second president here. Saint Paul, Zion missionary doctors of the South East, Saint Ananias, and others. I better go and put that in, but I think somebody lives near that one. We had golf tournaments. We had the Red Bird. The Red Birds playing at Elluma, um, baseball field. They were feet of force to the, to the Negro league. And they played at Elluma, that's how diverse this community was. We had an education system par excellence. And we had dedication to intellectual competitiveness, to meet the competition wherever we were on the field. When I returned from combat, it was as a Sierra Bronnik had made a retrograde move to the rear. You know what that is, don't you, Mr. Mayor? It's a term used in the military for retreating. In the streets, it's known as fleeing, running in panic, not advancing towards victory. Why, I ask, had we backed up? Stunned, puzzled, and confused? It was as if I was back on the, on the burn wood at the 106th Field General Hospital in Japan, smelling and looking at burned flesh. Beautiful section of town I left had been shoved aside for death. Remembering our orders to not leave anyone behind, I put my work in form to save our part of the city, which would improve the entire city. But opposition has come from everywhere. Two changers became one. No one wanted to listen or do anything that would have moved the numbers from 1.53 billion to well over 2.2 billion. When you change the numbers, everybody benefits economically. Well, they will say Matthew 25th chapter don't apply to us. The Bible is too ancient for us to use as our guide. If you're hungry, stay anyway. If you believe in sharing, it does not mean two are with you. And you certainly ain't got nothing to contribute. I disagree. Just like the lad with five bowls and two fishes, I do. And you, and you need this contribution that we have to make this city a better place. For economic development through entrepreneurship, building such as a culture center will allow people who are not on the, uh, the, uh, what's that thing y'all use every day of slaves? And folk that come from the prisons? How much y'all saving money? The crews, that hurts us. Prisoners, bringing prisoners into the city to work is not what we are here tonight for. We want to suggest there's a better way. When George W. Bush signed into law the Guale Deitch Culture and Heritage Act of 2007, a Republican, I left the Guale Deitch and came back a very proud one. I left here with Guale Deitch and came back here a very proud one. Silver and gold have I none, but such as I have, I want to give to this community for the improvement of this community. We have pled with leadership. We have begged leadership. Because I am toxic, we even sent nice, humble people to come to this particular leadership group as a commission, a Guale Deitch commission, as soon as the law was signed into effect. That's been 12 years ago. From Golden Isles and African-American tourist facilities, that's where they came. Now we're back. Because what I, what, what the president of the local branch of the N double A C P, the non-conflicts in coalition with the commissioner, the Political Emergency Action 397, Wake Force, Alan, Commissioner Alan Booker, the Southeast Georgia Black Chamber of Commerce, Friends in Many Churches, the Tunis Campbell Subtinal Clark Freedom School, a community, the Community Congress for this project. They're starving for you to make up your mind to do this project. Dignity is a tool, we would suggest, that you can give back to our community by doing this project. You will give the young men pastors, principal pastors of the poor project, a reason to come from off their knees and get to work on behalf of that congregation. So please, let's change the direction for progress. Take these gifts we are bringing to you from the diversity. And let the whole city live. Please don't take anything said tonight as a demand. Don't take any tone as a demand. But take this as a request. Please, denial and rejection will have continued spiral downward process for this city. Thank you.
We can do this. We have the money. We have some resources. We can access more. We can have a hotel. Partner with us in part of this. And we can start within 60 days. So I would ask you all to appoint staff, whoever, to work with this community, this ad hoc committee, to get this done. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you bringing that to us. Also, thank you, Mr. Lyer. And also, thank you, Dr. Perry. Appreciate being, you guys being, uh, informed citizens of our community. And we're glad to pay forward the fact that there is still continued interest in the overall block, continued interest in economic development of our downtown area and specifically that section. Knowing all along that that is a catalyst, project that we need to do that will help turn the economic woes of this whole entire community. So we appreciate you bringing that. And I will be getting back with you real soon on that information. Also, appreciate Mr. Tatiana Cook for bringing to us about the Juneteenth. Some people ask why? Why? Because we should never forget what happened, where we came from, and where we're going. This is something I told her, I need to at least know the history of what's going on. Don't just get it from somebody just told you. We have searched it out for stuff and know the history of why. So thanks, and now. Now, okay, move back on. I need to be considered for approval. I don't know, want to still approve of March 6, 2019, Red Bird's gave a meeting minutes. It's in our package. Commissioners, I entertain a motion if you have a chance to approve it already.
I'm motion to approve.
I want to instead approve, approve of the minutes. I need a further discussion. Here in the all-in-one position right here. I motion carries and ask. Also, Commissioner, Mayor, thank you for opening the meeting for me. You know, I had a previous engagement and that was, uh, great works several in the service of retirement that debt. They retired a $3.5 million debt within 13, 14 years. So evidently they're doing something really great there. We always provide, uh, glad to represent the city, the city commissioner. I don't know, two, to approve of resolution number 2019-2, Georgia Economic, Georgia Environmental Protection with Passive Waste Trust Fund Reimbursement, Fourth Street Land Bill. Our director, our colleague, Morrison, is here with an advocate representative.
Thank you.
Lady.
This item is for the first cost for the Fourth Street Land Bill. I think most of you know the history of that landfill. It was used as a municipal land. It closed in 1988 and then added to hazardous sites in 2004. With any landfill after it's closed, there's a home door monitor and a key maintenance which is required by E P D. Methane monitoring, groundwater monitoring. The arrangement, we're having the street owners of this land, which is the city, the organization of the county. And the city is responsible for 50% of maintenance costs and the home door monitor cost for this land. Over the last probably eight and a half months, the city has paid just over $68,000 to a consultant for the maintenance and monitoring of this landfill. The Georgia E P D operates a Hazardous Waste Trust Fund. And all of our costs that we pay through the, our two-year consultant on reimbursement through this Hazardous Waste Trust Fund. So we have submitted those bills as in voices to E P D. They have approved that for 100% reimbursement. The next step is to pass the resolution and sign the contract to, uh, which formalizes the payment for us to accept this reimbursement. So what I'm asking tonight is for you to approve a resolution that will offer us the city manager to execute a contract with E P D to accept that $68,046 and one cent reimbursement.
Commissioners, if you do that, somebody might kill someone. Okay, probably both are set for acceptance, resolution, issues resolution for acceptance of reimbursement. I need a further discussion. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for what you did. Really appreciate that. All right, move back on. Consider having a big, to approve of purchase of new asphalt, spraying patching. If your kids are, uh, absolutely presenting.
All right. This item, like you said, is for approval of asphalt, spray injection patching equipment. As you know, if you've been around town, we've got some streets that definitely in need of repair. Hot holes, cracks, road cuts, that kind of thing. Got a lot of work to do around town. The typical patching operation in the past has been to take coal mix asphalt and just put in the hole, empty out a little bit and, you know, let it, hope it lasts. This, the coal mix asphalt is never intended to be a long-term investment. You know, it's been used in a lot of locations as long-term, so there's a lot of reapply and going back to repair hot holes repeatedly. This, this patching equipment is budgeted is, um, is what they call an injection patcher. What that does is it, um, it's taken behind a truck, got rattle, end up truck. Come in, blow out, use compressed air to blow out the hole, make it clean with a good hot hole. Blow it out, make it clean, spray the inside with the emulsion, basically, tar. And then it sprays tar-coated aggregate inside that, so that it sticks. It's not a loose material. It's not a loose field which is likely to pop back out. It's a coated field. And the way it's sprayed in there is a patented material that should last longer, much longer than that coal mix asphalt that was many years ago. This item was budgeted in last year's budget in the 2019 budget. So we went and put out RFP for this item. We invested $68,000 for it. We put out RFP, we got two bids on it. One for $63,550. Another bid, higher bid for $67,250 for identical equipment. So we're asking for approval to purchase at a lower price of those two bids, $63,550 asphalt spray injection patching.
Commissioner, one question to you. Was there any training to do on this? Or we already know how to use equipment? There will be some training which will be provided rather than a kind of onsite training to prepare our equipment. Do you make questions, Commissioner?
I have one question. I realize it's been budgeted, but does it, for any reason, make more sense to finance approval, G M I, or any other options?
If we got the cash, I may not be able to purchase it. So we planned for the purchase last year to be budgeted. I think if we do the cash, I may not be able to purchase it. But what, because this, I'm assuming that you all have thoroughly read the machine, know that it better than what we're doing as far as. Yes, sir. Like I said, that coal mix, it will typically use, you know, it gets meat out of those holes pretty quickly. Everything, everything we've learned about this product because of the spraying emulsion in there and the coated aggregate, it stays much better, it's a much longer lasting. Want to know about maintenance upkeep? There, there will be maintenance, um, kind of procedures you go through, cleaning it. But what we can tell is often you clean it properly and follow that, have a checklist every time you use it. Maintenance costs should be, should be relatively low. It's got a standard, you know, a small tonne dear, or certain engine on it. So there's nothing really, the components that are really adding ordinary to it. The biggest part of maintenance is going to be cleaning it. Like any, if you clean it up, it's going to last longer or more, but.
I assume they have maintenance approval which is taken on this stuff.
This, this price.
Maybe it should have sold.
This price is not included, man. Similar to the back truck, this, this, um, purchase, this price does not include a maintenance for that, um, maintenance for this equipment. Because there's, there's really not any, you know, like any difference or added ordinary mechanical equipment on it. You know, something that our guys in the shop can, can repair and address if needed.
So it's really cleaning it?
The biggest thing is cleaning.
So I'm assuming anyone, so. Yeah, we have seen a protocol in this equipment that's taken out huge.
We, we plan to have dedicated approval to this and those guys will be one responsible. And we'll have a checklist for, you know, when you finish this and it comes back to the yard. These items have to be done.
What was the lifespan of this particular sprayer?
The lifespan of the sprayer itself.
Yeah, I want to be expected to be serviceable in the doing things.
I'm not sure exactly. I mean, there's more we can tell from other users. It's been in use for 10, 12 years at least. So, and still, still ongoing to working.
So, so you get a comparative analysis of the cost that you were saving in purchasing this machine versus what the cost means now for the continued repairs and patches?
Right, and, and more so the, I guess, the inconvenience of those holes being open and going back just the one time. That's where the cost is going to be is to go back, fill it one time compared to going back and back and back. When you put that aggregate in there, it's got to be better, stronger than just base asphalt. Now, I'm, what I was to get to, you know, stuff like this, put a piece of asphalt here and we can, we can check it out. I mean, I did bring some literature. It did not get attached to the rig. We were asking, but I didn't have one. It might be, you know, to be announced. Yeah.
So is it compacted? Once, once the aggregate material is put in the hole, is it, is it compacted? Or is it just compacted on or?
It, it does not have to be compacted. We would probably compact it. They say it would be fine without compacting. But that's the problem with a lot of that coal patch. It gets compacted under traffic. It gets impacted under the traffic.
So what was the warranty?
I believe it has a one-year warranty. That should have gone down. So you got, you got, you got warranties from these counties? You have this deal? Sorry? You have, you got warranties from these counties? Did you have a little bit? Yes, sir. Rick, Rick Turner talked to me some time ago. Then he used that. He was satisfied with, with the recommendations that he got back from. He was satisfied with, with the recommendations that he got back from.
Well, you know, I'm glad that, that we are still with it because we had to go back and repatch L Street numerous times and the last time is still, but we are, signed the contract with L Street now and we're ready to go and work April first, April first, yes. That's no eight to move. Yeah, that's what we did on April first. People are asking and requiring, and I should have took a picture, we signed that contract with L Street, was really good. But getting back to this, this machine, I think it was a wonder for us to, so we can patch the road that we will not pay this year or maybe pay in the next year, so it'll give us some time so we can continue with our, our continued maintenance of our streets and roads. I, I do say, Steve said the two-year limit warrant, what was that warrant?
Okay.
Yeah, the back warrant, it's one year, it's not paying like two-year limit, limit part twenty.
I just, I, I'd just be interested to know what actually costs, savings, what would it cost us at present to go and do the patching and repatch it and all that stuff versus what we want to save from the purchase of having, having this type of, this type of tape.
I've made that question before.
Okay.
Further questions, comments? Any other things?
I would like to reapprove purchase of the warm patcher for sixty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty.
Most accepted for approval of, of the new asphalt spray patcher. Further discussion, commissioners, comments? Uh, city attorney, everything's good? All in favor please raise your right hand. I don't know who cares, thank you, sir, thank you. Next item number, agenda is, consider approval of resolution authorized the city to further invest in Georgia Fund One. This is Captain Mills, this is my director. Good evening.
Uh, we have a forward, you, you asked the city to authorize investment in Georgia Fund One for policy quick, that favor. We approved this last year around this time and since we're all back and for the finance committee, we would like to add some additional city accounts, in particular, we have the four hundred and thirty account that is on previously on the list. And I actually went back, you have to do a new resolution for all of the accounts, you start, you can't just add something. So I have a list there in fact that shows all of the accounts and I think the last four, the ones that I'm adding, some of them aren't exactly active right now, but I tried to go back and see, okay, I thought we might get money in the future in some way, so that I wouldn't have to keep coming back and redoing it. So I've added four accounts on there, but the main ones that I'm looking to put money is police seizure funds and that's for utility.
So those are the ground fields, you know, those back roads?
Right, we don't have the ground fields money right now, but we have a account from previously and that is called the. You think it is some side by side, I would put that on there, so it wouldn't have to keep coming back. And it's very difficult, you can get the money in basically twenty-four hours. We've called you my two on Monday, we got to the next morning. And we've been earning two point four two percent for the last two months now, twice our, we've seen some sizable additions to all of our funds that have invested in Georgia Fund One. So this is just a resolution, just like the one we did last March, to add some support to us.
And of course, Prime South Bank, that's local one.
Prime South is our local bank.
So this is money taken from their bank for them to Georgia Fund?
Yes, sir, and we are still negotiating some with Prime South, they would like to get all of this money back. And I think when we have the finance meeting again next week, we're going to have some discussion there because they have talked with me a couple of times and basically told me that, um, they're going to raise our fee for our monthly service that we probably currently have. And so they're supposed to be giving a number of, you know, how much are they going to raise it? And I would want to know that what possible we may have to sell our assets to us.
Yes, there's other places out there, there's other places, so.
Definitely, not. It was too early?
Yes, and that forward, not this commission. Okay, commissioners, any questions for Ms. Mills concerning the re-admission to invest our money, invest the city's money, invest our citizens' money for, for, uh, we do business with, with governments of the city of London.
Make a motion that we approve the resolution to authorize the city to invest in Georgia Fund One with the four additional accounts.
Most accepted for approval of resolution, any further discussion? All in favor please raise your right hand. I'm most careful, and thank you, thank you, Ms. Mills. Alright, let's put some money. Alright, time enough to fly. Consider approval of In-Prison Apparatus, incentive for REES, Apothecary. Apothecary, Apothecary, Apothecary.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, this is our eighth In-Prison application for REES Apothecary, which is located at sixteen eighteen the Castle, the Old Royal Cafe, then Christie's, then, um, Fourth of May. Mr. Dan came before you, I believe, in December and got his alcohol license started. In-Prison's have been, were initiated in two thousand and fourteen, as I said, this is the eighth one we've had. Because this is a tenant, there is no tax rate attached to this, this is only for fees, business license fees, sign permit fees, there's no building permit required, so there's no building permit fee, but the inspection fees, um, it totals approximately three hundred and seventy dollars. REES Apothecary is a restaurant and speed easy menu, it's in the back of your cabinet, it starts on page fifteen. It is called Apothecary because the food, food is health, so healthy food is good for you. And Apothecary is a health-related old-fashioned term on the drugstore. They will be employing twenty people. This has been approved by the city departments that have developed an authority board and the finance committee. They're approved for, to, or they have recommended that the commissioner approve the, um, incentives. Also, I just said, hiring like twenty people, also I see that, how many, Ja, New Ja, we, they're all New Ja.
Oh, New Ja, yes.
He doesn't, he hasn't existed anywhere else.
Questions, commissioners? You know, all the diligence down the back, like providing time and all the days, or, or, good days, but when is he going to get?
Uh, he is, I think, open in the next couple of weeks.
Is it looking promising?
Yes, yes.
Uh, further questions?
No, I make a motion that we approve the abatement of permitting, fifty various permitting fees total of three hundred and seventy dollars for, as for the In-Prison incentive package for REES Apothecary.
Second, the REES probably most accepted for approval of the In-Prison incentive for REES Apothecary, uh, with the abatement of set fees of three hundred and seventy dollars. Further comments, personal? All in favor please raise your right hand. Both care and thank you, thank you. Alright, we had item number six, alcohol beverage license, new, new licenses. Consider approval of one alcohol beverage license, name of the business, A-one Beer and Tobacco. Owner is Miss Natisse, Tail and Roach. Roach, Tail, twenty-four thirty-two, look at. Ms. Elliott is presenting.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Recently we had a new application for the alcohol license, saying this has been approved previously. Unfortunately, they weren't able to open at the time that they weren't allotted, so they're coming back for the second time now that they're actually officially open. This is for a retail package for beer and wine. Everything has been cleared as far as the criminal issue that's been ran over by owners and there's nothing that's coming up that would raise any replies to include these two companies also own two other establishments within our city, Bunkies and Amberland, both opened in the afternoon. When I pulled the three hundred and sixty-five record of their calls for service there, none of which have any criminal backgrounds or anything such as that that would reply.
What about, what about Senator Ray, his bunkies?
Uh, Bunkies does have, I apologize, let me write that down, Bunkies does have a six-month probation starting this year from January until June nineteen, uh, June two thousand and nineteen, it's six months probation for, um, an underage sale from last year. But outside of that, as far as any of our calls for service there, none of them actually surround the business itself other than that underage alcohol sale.
Do they have one or do they have two?
They had to have two because we spent it for sixty-one. Chief, you know about that?
Maybe they had one a couple of years ago, so now I don't get into the details, I need to say it for sure.
Yeah, I apologize because what I read was just the one from, I believe, December is when they, when the previous state marshal did his, so if there was two, I would always go back.
This one we might have a more suspension.
Yes, we would.
You think it was a three?
Yes.
Okay, is the, after here?
Yes, both of them.
Did they like the same? No, sir, okay, I'm, I'm here, okay. Okay, thank you, questions for Ms. Elliott?
I have one question, is it operating, um, as a, as a business but not selling here or wanting?
Correct, they just recently opened and they have, um, the convenience store setting type, they have their cooler drinks and their shelter stock, but as far as the alcohol, they have zero alcohol in this, this patch during this time.
We, is this, uh, this is the one on the new campus, you mean?
Yes, sir.
Okay, which they had a, a license that's never executed, I guess.
Yes, sir, correct.
Alright, thank you. Now, since this is a new license, I will entertain anyone here to speak for or against the granting of this license. So you would come forth, state your name, your address, and I'll give you two minutes to speak. Any other questions forward? Ms. Elliott, is there anything else you'd like to say before we, when others say? Okay, let me, uh, what's a little bit?
I make a motion we approve the license for A-one beer and tobacco.
Second, most accepted for approval of alcohol beverage license, this new license for A-one beer and tobacco. Are there any further discussions?
Yes. I have a concern because we have violation at another location by the same owners that are on a six-month probation, but we want to grant it in a different location. City Attorney, I need some input from you on this situation, because if that concerns anybody else, it does concern me.
It's a lot of concern, it's a, I would say it's tied to the location, the license tied to the location to the probation, we have a location, but with them being same owners, with some commission taking into consideration, goes up to you, the commission say, you know, is this one on probation, the other locations are in on probation, you know, deny it or approve it if otherwise, apply to call, show up with it, but, um, we're often very covered, it's not, we just have to prove, not replace the condition most of the ways, the same six months, we've had a change in the past, you know, conditionally approved, six months probation period, safe situation, no, uh, she's a city owner and sort of state owner.
I don't think I, it's a different owner, I just, I'm sorry.
I'll have to speak.
Sorry.
Um, commissioners, um, uh, I have a concern, uh, well, but I, I think that, uh, they had a license before, it never constituted that license, plus, uh, I just feel that they are, uh, I, I would hope that we are checking, continue checking, and since they was on probation, that one, one, that if anything happened again, and, you know, we could also make that, uh, stipulation for them on probation if something else happens. So I do understand, understand that, that fight about, uh, same owners seems to be, uh, maybe moving things around, but if they have a license for it, it's, that's my opinion. Anybody else?
I, I, I do respect that, I respect that, I, I, I would like to hear from him after I make this comment, but we have to, um, give him a say before we come up. But when they put in the initial application and they were approved for that location, the second violation had not yet occurred. So this did not come into play at that time. Now we have different circumstances that are hovering over this approval request for tonight. And so those things need to be considered in our decision-making process here tonight. But I would like to hear from you to find out, because I think he was saying something different. So if you got a little something different to say, you can.
I'll, 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 I'll jump to this. I was saying, it's difficult, I had to work there for months here, now I'm finding that I need to get it for myself. Now, I'm, I'm referring back to a new store, I was just working there.
You were just working?
Yeah, I'm focused.
Because you're the owner of?
The new store, this is, uh, twenty-four thirty, new past.
But you won't, you're not going to make committed by nature?
No, I won't.
That's, that's clarity, that's, that's a big important piece in this.
He's stated that it's the same owner.
No, we're brothers, that's why, I'm, I'm not official owner of that store.
Of Bunkies?
Bunkies, correct.
Your brother's not on this request?
Right, the license is mine.
That, that makes, for me, that makes a difference, that's a big thing. Thank you. Mrs. City Attorney, we, we need to make sure we have some legal, definition of the finding, for me, anyway.
On the, legit, it says Fish and, Fish and Robin Hotel, who is that?
I'm the chef.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
But, yeah, is it listed on the application?
So it is on the, both of them fill out the application, but um the owner is Mr. Mitesh and the manager is going to be his brother, who owns the other establishments.
I'm the manager at the other establishment as well. My uncle and my dad own Bunkies, and I used to manage, my dad and Bunkies. And I've been working here with them as well.
Can I ask you one thing?
Is it?
They can't do what they do on the back. They put some on the back of the wall.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so with, with that being, being the current circumstances, and, and I would hate to hold tight the, the other, so how can we do this that if there is an occurrence at this location, that we're able to take expedited actions, can you consider that? Do you understand what I'm trying, I'm trying to be gentle in what I'm trying to say here.
From my understanding, if there's a violation, the commission still have that liberty to suspend, promote, even if it's.
I think the question was to bring it back immediately after the first violation.
That's, that's, that's all.
And now just make a real direction to the marshal on something that we can do. I think that was the direction previously, the marshal, if you guys wanted to hear these issues closer to when they occurred rather than right in the future. So if it's something really direction sad, that if something were to take place at the A1, we just need to bring it at the next mission, we can of course bring it to your attention and take action if necessary, whether it be following uh, I think it's the fine series of the settlements, plus the way, I think that's what the commission wish.
Okay. I would have.
Okay, any further questions, commissioners, or comments? So the most of the flow is to approve of, of A1 Beer and Tobacco. Uh, if there any further discussions or concerns? Hearing the all in favor of this alcohol beverage license, please raise your right hand. I'm most of carriers again. Also, uh, Ms. Elliott, I think uh according to the city manager, excuse me, city attorney, uh, we would like to have you, if any violation or whatever occurs at location, to bring it back, maybe bring it back to our.
Yes, sir. I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright. Okay, item number seven, appointment uh for Land Bank, uh, Land Bank, Land Bank, one appointment and uh, appointment that, is it my appointment or commission?
Commission.
Commission. Okay, we have uh.
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, commissioner, please adhere us to be reappointed for another term of the land bank.
Second, most of the second for a reappointment, uh, commissioner, please have us see you another term, um, on the Land Bank, Land Bank, any further discussions? That's your chair, that's your. Now, you have a question?
No, I don't feel the term, but I do.
I love the term.
It hurts, it's two years, but it should have started four years.
You're trying to be four? Right. Okay, good. Any comments? Four new good times.
And we are, we do our.
Raise your right hand.
No, I'm.
Okay. So we're probably most second for a reappointment, Mr. Harris has a, has a chair for the next uh, return, term of uh four years. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Most of carriers again. Thank you for uh, Harris. Alright, we're down now to the city manager, item uh, item number eight, so approval agreement with Boeing, A and Company for investment management services for city of London to find pension plans. City manager?
We have a frequent force uh tonight for financial services, actually, it's investment management services for the defined pension uh that the city has. Um, it was serviced for many years by Mr. Jimmy Kellman with the marshals in the South Side of the Island, and the, the fall recently indicated to us that he retired and closing his business. And so we put together a, our financial lines of local services and received eight proposals, two are not responsive, six that we have, we had a working members of board, also Mr. Kellman advised, and we went through the, the ranking, and then we came forward and presented having the top two uh terms actually been reviewed for the full pension committee. Pension committee reviewed the uh terms and writing them as well, and they named one of the hands, the name of the firm. The uh, very good track record, working with other public firms, other pension plans, and uh, though we had no relation, so recently we were selected as the candidate. I mean, the investment management, actually, Mr. Kellman served the candidate for many years also. So uh, it's not a contract for approval. Mr. Kellman actually retired on March twenty-ninth, and so he moved pretty much immediately. The contract was, I haven't, I hadn't heard about the city attorney, but I believe it was a rewrite, so it went by Mr. Cartwright, as the pension manager tried, so he's actually uh repented the contract, and so we had a fresh contract.
Is that uh, the permanent date for Mr. Kellman? Since March forty of two thousand and eighteen?
No, that's not forty, that is, that is nineteen, yes, he's been at the end of March. Sorry about that.
Wrong in the last um.
Oh, yes, sorry. I mean, it's been done here.
Yeah, I was like, what's been happening?
Some parts been done, so we're, we're looking for it's the last, the last year. Um, definitely, I think we need some tape.
Okay, of course, you, you would heard uh what the city manager presented here about the new company, Boeing, A and Company, uh, concerned uh, defined pension plan. Uh, who's on the pension committee?
Pension committee, the commissioner, Harris, the commissioner, Case, and then uh myself and the assistant city manager and Captain Mills, the finance director, we were considered the, by the plan trustee.
Okay.
Three of us together, and then we have two employees, the city commissioner points. So we have Captain Bobbino, the fire department, and we have Roy Koppel of the police department representing general.
Okay. Um, any representation for the pension?
Yes, sir, the pension committee actually did review the recommended.
City attorney, did you change your time, Charlie?
We, I, I did, I've been involved with this uh since they first started looking out and we drafted, I have RFP, but because of pension, um, the plan has its own council, uh, in essence, what I did is we really did the changes, I saw about the necessary is that the city has its own sponsor to fulfill the rest of the contract, uh, and rather than really giving the agency, but the planning council drafted, uh, needed to make, took minor changes and now it's ready to be presented to you guys.
And the, the planning council is, is Clay, what's Clay's last name?
Curry.
And he, he is a, he, neither, Clay has demonstrated that he has the city's best heart and interest. So he is.
He is a true sharp detail.
Yeah, he is very, very skilled.
Okay, any questions, commissioner, for the comments?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement of the Boeing, A and Company for investment management services for the city of London with the pension plan.
So again, most of the second for the approval agreement with Boeing, A and Company uh for our, for investment management services for our defined benefit pension plan. Has been approved by our pension committee, the recommended by pension committee. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing the all in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Most of carriers stand by. Thank you, Mr. Drum. Also, the ninth, should approve of memorandum of understanding with the lead county of Board of Education to gate Mansfield Street through the academy school operations.
Yes, sir.
I see that represents one school board here.
We, we do. Yes, sir, we do. We have to tell that uh, two items, actually, the first one uh is, comes as a request of the Board of Education to deep Mansfield Street, uh, from Albany Street to Eggmont, which will through the Glen Academy campus. Uh, I think that the Board of Education, the security, provide greater security on the campus during school operation hours. And I know that they came to us last year after, especially after concerns of some of our parking floors, some of the streets that were still around the country. And so they came forward and they were working piece by piece to rebuild and put the fence along the campus to find their security. Currently, we close the roads anyway, so there's not a traffic pattern at those students who are not, not approved of traffic pattern. Cars do still come around the barricades and occasionally come through the structure. Uh, the students, as they come, come through the campus, they're easily, wouldn't barricade, or sometimes uh, school or police are blocking the road. And so when they're looking for something, so, if the city, uh, arrived at St. Francis School years ago, is that they have a gate that's closed during school hours and we will be able to traffic after school operations. Uh, there's others tonight.
Not summer school, but I was just during the regular, not on school campus.
I, I think you could count summer school in the operation.
Want to thumb it up also?
We can tell where.
It's traffic is the regular school hours, special.
The city attorney drafted the regulations, so.
Yes, boy.
Again, I'm gonna ask the special men, summer school will be considered a special man, and uh, we're not for during the school hours only, so if you talk about eight o'clock, four o'clock, anything that they come up and they need, that might require extra security, that we might have closed campus, or if in this case, for the summer school, you know, as, as Mr. Drum was indicating, we're really concerned about security. You know, what happened in Parkland, that, that really is bad, it's so horrific, and part of that was an unfettered access entrance to the system. Glen Academy is so unique, the way the campus is laid out is so different than any other place, and so we asked for the best of the city or our owners to gate that as well. So we've had numerous instances with events taking place where people have come on campus, and I think this is one way to enhance security and safety of marshals.
Do you all have cameras, security cameras, that are focused on that spread of vans field at all?
You've actually, uh, Mr. Drum, we've actually added additional cameras in the last couple of months, and through the last year, added additional security after additional security specifically for playing avenues as well as our.
But, um, sorry, I'm actually like some of the principal of the academy. Uh, having a second oldest school in the state, a fifth oldest school in the country, it change sometimes can be a little difficult, and so we, security's been one of the things. When I got there, academics have always been high, and so one thing that we've never really been able to do is, is to be a little more proactive and making sure things happen. Cameras are a reactive matter. We can tell you what happened, we can't stop it prior to what happened. Um, we do have cameras that are on that stretch, um, since I've been there, we've added, uh, I believe, over a hundred cameras to the campus so that we can monitor the campus much better. What, what we struggle with is having the city street run right through the middle of the campus. Uh, as you can imagine, I'm just gonna give you one scenario to kind of picture, uh, our, our police department is there to get to emergencies. We understand that, we work with them very well. Uh, you have students who put their earbuds in in between classes, they walk across the city street, but they don't have any expectation that the car will be there. There may be sirens on, there may be lights on, earbuds in the child theater, tunes them up, they everything. And so that, that's a unique kind of situation that we have to be aware of. Uh, we've had wonderful tourists walk around our campuses, you can imagine, go to Glen Academy anytime, there's some very beautiful buildings, but they can't be on campus taking pictures in the middle of the day. We've had that happen, we've had people who walk through, uh, we just would like to have something where there's a defended line between the school area and the college. And um, you know, I, we know that that's gonna be a beautiful thing, if we can do that, St. Francis.
Be respectful, please, and, and along the lines with everything we have ever heard, and I think that's an honor, and I'm contributing to that one of the sentences. It's, it's really a brave to defend something, we put it out already, the continuation that we provided adopting a vibrant design proposal already.
Three hours up here, we're in Glen Academy, you gonna be okay?
Well, I didn't have something to say, uh, I know, uh, you're talking about security, talking about security, but uh, good as having is, is still those cameras, uh, you can get in from the, on the Mansfield side, or the other side of there, you know? And uh, gates that you want to swing open up and close, uh, that is just a barrier to tell people you are coming into a secure area, you won't come to an area that, that's been blocked off. Um, and as I say, you know, people are getting barricades now, and I don't know why they figure they can get around, they shouldn't get around, but I think that's the area that you break home with something. I personally would like, the barriers to what's called in the ground, keep them coming in, taking in and out, whatever like that, that's what I would like, so you don't have to worry about it swinging, they open, you know, there, set, whatever, so that's just my personal opinion about what I would like. I realize you need to have some type of O A P, try going through this, uh, because it bothers things, I know.
So are you talking, maybe, or you're not doing, but also for pedestrians?
Yes, ma'am, the, the design that, that we were looking at is a, uh, people would still be able to, once you're on campus, be able to go off campus on the feathers, a push bar, much like you would see in like a building when you push out, you just would be able to open it from the outside to come in, but you would be able to, and we had that set up for, you know, it's like anything else, if there's an emergency, we would, we would still be able to exit campus, just like it were built.
We worked it all, that's right. I'll just give you an example, Monday during, during closure of school dismissal, and you have eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred and seven.
Spreading out throughout campus, and so there, so Mansfield Street is just popping with students and buses and activity, and up walks a number, the backpacker, the stands is about that, a million of fifteen, eighteen hundred students, and so that's some of the things that would be able to stop through as possible.
Did you bring any uh drawings of the gates you want?
They were presented already to, to the.
They swing in, swing out, they swing out towards, truly, oh, swing out, swing in. Yeah, well, they don't swing in towards the campus from both sides, so they wouldn't interfere with, with uh, any more.
Okay, there's a, there's a brick column on each side of Mansfield, north and south side of Mansfield, the gates, like you said, swinging inside, so it's, it's, I guess, a dark aluminum color, dark colored aluminum gate actually mounted on a brick column. It's nice looking, and it goes along with the other fence, and of course, with that start, further down the line, further down the.
Essentially, the same thing, that the Mansfield's about the last. Alright, um, commissioners, comments for, remember the school board?
I think both of them have, my, my, both of them work for Glen Academy, and she's the school resource officer.
Tells me all the time, we got to do something, we have a great experience, somebody coming through the campus, those kids in the middle of the street, driving, shunning, whatever. You know, it's too late, everything at that point, of it is reactive. I mean, we need to make a service to our children, we need to.
That's true, and we don't like to think of what is gay.
Commissioner Casey, have you commented?
I'm all for it, it's a beautiful.
Terrorists like that. I'll make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding with Lincoln County Board of Education to gate Mansfield Street for Blue Cat.
Most of it's been motion, and second for gate to, for the gate Mansfield Street for Blue Cat's school operations, any further discussion? Here it is, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
We have a citywide, annual citywide meeting, April the twenty seventh, we want to see you all participate with the City of Brunswick. We we have information that's come to the Board of Education as well, it's already been sent to the superintendent. But we want to make sure that you all, please, call staff, pull a team, pull whoever, pull the Board of Education members, pull somebody, pull anybody. And we're going to be cleaning up the City of Brunswick, it's our third, we do an annual, this is our third event, so we want to see you all out there participating.
Is that a day long list, or?
It's 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 from nine to eleven, it's just a couple hours, it may, you get you in in the morning, and you have a rest to get there, and we also.
You do lunch, that's right. All right, I remember seeing this approval of memorandum of understanding for the Big Town Board of Education for right square renovation.
Commissioner Harris, our Senator, Board of Education, while we were discussing the issues on the gate, we've also discussed the possibilities of regaining ownership to a portion of Parkland Street, which had been closed several years ago. Having the school board of Board of Education is able to acquire the north side of White Square and the west side of the square. The, if you recall, Commissioner Martin actually presented this to me last year, in her role as executive director of City of Brunswick. And showed the plan, as we talked about the plan, that City of Brunswick had to have a full renovation of White Square. And part of that would involve trying to recapture some of the lost property that we have on the, the northeast side, the north side of the square.
Thank you, that's that's what I was like, north side, but it was east to west, so I just want.
The, well, the square, actually, the square is the south side of George Street and the north side of George Street. The piece that we're looking at is by the tax courts, where Parker Street used to run, is still there, but it's actually now, I believe, there's a piece of the parking lot. And on the north side, there's a, the end of the roads, plan production allow a straight line, and it allows us to build a road down the north side of the public street. So land we were required could be used also, there's some parking there, there's a street to be there, brought through that area, once again, for restoration. So that's what we have in mind is to regain that property, the school board is agreed to do that property, that's what we have in mind. This is again, so we tried to draft it, and we also, Board of Education's attorneys.
What you talking about, George Street?
That was a part of the concept, that's not actually what's being voted.
Not part of that, sir.
Okay, but it is, it is a concept that's been presented as part of the renovation of the square. And so if we were to do that, you would need to do this to have the ability to route traffic around the spot of the square. So this would allow us to pose a square for the choose to do so, but it's not part of the assembly you said.
Any questions, commissioners, for the city, city manager? Are we gonna, we, we do some of the right square, we're gonna make it even larger, or are we gonna do some of that?
That's, I think that's a separate decision, I'll leave it for a plan to be presented, but all this is for you guys to know, it's, and it's sort of obvious now, because we had two surveys done on two pieces of property, you're going to work through that. Solid support tonight, really, is the convenience of these two pieces of property that will make up part of the street.
We would expect that it would be presented, and then you could see how it would be designed, like, as signature squares, with the road closed, to that person kind of move forward, to, to have that separately.
So can you please remind us of who bears the cost to dig up, repay, create, I mean, is that, is that Board of Education?
Board of Education.
Yeah, they give it back the property.
So because they're giving up the property, then it falls on the city, correct?
There there's a portion of the.
They did, they did what's there currently, because they own that, they currently, right now, own that source.
So the improvements, as in, look at the the two surveys that's attached, and you can see that what would be, is kind of current in Parker Street, is almost up to the specs of what would be a city driveway. A portion of the sort of northern border of White Square, we would need that property to complete, or it would be a city driveway. Even outside of the portion of it, school boards can pay, they still want to have it, and they'd be able to utilize and make it a parking area and stuff, but the city is going to be.
Yeah, if you look at the map, I should say the survey, the road sort of has a, that little jogging. And the plan would be that the piece of land we have, includes a piece of the driveway, which is part of the street, would go straight, it would not jog. And it rises to build a straight from across the top of the square. And the existing road could then be used on private property, to a private property, the parking would be adjacent to the street, so the additional parking would lie in that area of the existing road.
Which point is all white square? Yeah.
That notch in the city.
That's the city engineering.
Actually, there's a lot of, the survey, the city engineer, work with the surveyors, and also looking at Board of Education.
Any questions, commissioners, or comments?
What about any driveway access for utilities or is that, is that considered?
I'm going to let utilities, there are utilities.
There are the camera poles for lighting, parking, does it access for house easement and get up and consider?
The property, the property that's being looked at to be transformed here, just just considered for the roadway, it is not, it's perfect. Now, utilities outside of that, that curb, I think it's a thirty foot wide section. The roadway you probably can put in there is probably twenty five feet, so there'd be a couple feet behind the curb there. If you need a, I'll call something, it would be right behind the curb, but you would have room in what will be the city's property, if you can, if it's possible.
But there wouldn't have to be any.
Right. Everything is already established in that area, as far as the school, they established, are they lighting, or not, and the tennis court.
So you don't foresee.
Not looking, they have to do any kind of proof, it's in that area.
Okay, further questions?
All right, commissioners, it's up to us to, to the M O U, Board of Education, and for the base of White Square. And those are the questions I entertain most, please.
No, most of them, for the M O U, the Big Town School Board, for the White Square, Parker Street, White Square D, back to City of London.
Most second for approval to the M O U, Big Town Board of Education, for White Square renovation, any further discussion, comments? Here in all the favor, please raise your right hand, and most prepared as an advocate. Uh, Mr. City Manager, before you sit down, uh, I think we we talked about cushions for the city, the vendors.
Okay.
I think he was going to look into that, so I don't know whether that is all, we need that to happen, I know people are sitting here and.
I believe he was looking at the possibility, the possibility of making, costing, custom making conditions, maybe in a way actually easier to to chairs.
We have two chairs for this building.
No, we're not, we're looking at chairs, I guess, that's some of the tables and chairs that are used around the store, anyway. So, I'm just saying, I, is it stored built?
You have a door here, but one fan, and they got a whole ton of doors.
Uh, what do you, you. Anyhow, we, we, please, please do, I expect something, maybe, next meeting, you know what's going on, so we can see about, see about this. Okay, maybe we come to the end of our regular clinic's agenda, identity, need for a statement session, or solicitation, okay? Now, most we, we have a decision for the issue. Motion, most second for government to, statement for litigation, any further, all favors raise your right hand. Okay, we will, I'm tired to statement session for litigation, I presume we will come back here and turn our regular.